I'd like to call the meeting to order. Everybody, if you have a question, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Jana Dykett?
Yep.
Joe Protrosky?
Here.
Kelly Hooper?
Here.
Timothy West?
Here.
I'm here. And Joshua Duane, Joshua Duane, Deander Whaley. Sorry about that. And Amelie Grue.
Here.
Okay, welcome everybody to our first in-person meeting in quite a while. We're also Zooming. And Mrs. Fawcett is handling that for us, so thank you for that. If anyone in person has a comment about a specific agenda item, please raise your hand when we reach that item. And for anyone attending via Zoom, notify us in the chat, and I will call on you when we get to that item after the school committee has finished its discussion. If anyone has any general comments, please feel free to bring that forward during our public comments after our new business, and thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of Winthrop School Committee meeting.
Did you want to do the agenda adjustments?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Is there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, there are, there are not, but I'd like to just indulge the school committee for a second to talk about that whole process based on our conversation. We had a board workshop last week, as you all know. One of the things we did talk about is the adjustments to the agenda, and Mr. Bailey did suggest that the committee vote on adjustments, and, but then he also said it's not necessary. Actually, we should adopt a procedure which, I'm sorry, I need to take my glasses off or whatever, where you either vote, choose to vote, which I think is cumbersome and unnecessary, or that when, after we make some adjustments, that the chair would simply say, if anybody has issues or anybody objects to any of those, please, you know, let us know now. Without objection, we would, those would be accepted. Is that, are people okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Now I can entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Committee meeting of January 20th, 2021, as written or with corrections. So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, that vote is unanimous for in favor. Reports. The superintendent report.
Okay. I did send you my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions in there, but in addition to that, I want to take a little bit more time because it's, well, we're a little more than halfway through the year, and so I had asked Amanda to do some, to give me some additional reports to make sure where we stand. And I have some other, we, we had voted on some additional positions earlier in the year that we were going to continue, the COVID, I mean, sorry, the remote teachers and the ed techs, which we had initially used COVID funds for, or CRF funds for. And we voted to continue those without the COVID funds. And so I wanted to make sure at the time we made the decisions that we were, we were going to be fine. I'm going to ask you again, I'm going to ask you tonight to consider an additional position. And we'll get to that when it's, when it's, have it separate place on the agenda. But we did go through, and, you know, obviously, anytime you, you add things to the budget that's not been included, you put additional stressors on the budget. But we ran through the numbers, and it does appear that we're in pretty good shape. Not great shape, but we're in pretty good shape with respect to the budget for teachers, teachers and ed techs. And it actually shows up with a little bit of a deficit of $16,000. But some of that money will be, will be accounted for with the ESAR monies, the first with the CARES Act, we refer to as the CARES Act money. We had a savings day because of reduction in buses. We reduced the number of buses. And then we are still, the application was just open last week for the second round of CARES Act money, referred to as the ESAR funds. And so I think it's, I didn't really want to dedicate much of that money to salaries, but we haven't, we haven't even begun, in fact, maybe not meeting, what, Friday? To begin that conversation about applying for those second round of funding, I wanted to get these numbers first. And, and I guess my point to all of you is that we are in pretty good shape, actually really good shape from a budget standpoint after halfway through the year. And, I mean, I can be real specific about the numbers, but, you know, that's, they're really, Ida and I worked out, we have, I, you know, I'd have to go through and count them. I think it's 10 payrolls left through this fiscal year. And so we looked at what we would need for funds with our current staff, including our remote teachers and our ed techs for the remaining 10 pays. And we, we should be fine. And we, we could apply for an additional amount of money, probably no more than $30,000 or $40,000 in our ESAR monies, because I have other thoughts I want to share with you guys at some other point before we, we send that application in of what we can or should do with that, that funding. So I, again, I'm happy to go into detail if you want. You're, I'm happy to let you take a look at the entire budget that I looked at to prepare for tonight. I wanted to update you briefly, all, all of this is related, at least in my mind. I met with town council, a number of you, three or four of you attended that as well. So you, you kind of already heard this, but just for the record, I wanted to kind of go through the things, the fixed costs that I discussed with them. Talked about wages and benefits. Wages and benefits are contractually obligated. So the only, only flexibility we have with that is the number of staff attached. So we're not going to change that once we have a signed collective bargaining agreement. That whole process, staff generally, in any school system I've ever worked in takes up about 85% salaries and benefits of the entire budget. So that's a huge chunk. Negotiations are ongoing. Joe will talk about that later. We did have the state law raising the minimum salary this next year to $37,500, and then the following year to $40,000. So we are, we're working towards making our salaries or getting to, not just to the state minimum, but to make us more competitive with our area schools so we can attract and retain teachers. I talked about contracted bussing, particularly with the decision to sell our bus fleets. It's, it's become even more of an issue for us because that's a huge amount of money. And so we, we do now contract for buses without owning our buses, and we do continue to contract for most of our custodial services. We contract for fuel. We contract for electricity. We contract for property casualty insurance for main school management. And we contract for preventative maintenance. There's, there's some other things. Specifically with preventative maintenance, we deal with Siemens. A lot of our controls issues are with Siemens. And we also deal with G and E. They do most of, they do all of our roofs, shoot safely. But there, there are a few, those are, those are all really expensive. So when you put all of those fixed costs together, you're probably talking close to 95% of the budget. So realistically, we spent a lot of time having conversation about 5% of the budget. So there's not a great deal of flexibility. It isn't like we have a choice. We can't decide not to have electricity. We can't decide not to have fuel. We can't decide not to have preventative maintenance. So I guess we could. That would be a very bad choice. We can't decide to, you know, we can decide how many teachers and employees we, we employ, but, you know, that, that's not realistic. And just on a lesser, less of a number, we also contract for, with Tyler Technologies. They're our student information systems. Actually, they're not, but they're our accounting software. Power School is our student information system. Frontline is our, is our substitute program. And those are all contracts that we have within the district. So again, there's not a great deal that we can, we do, do with those. So the budget coming together has been a challenge. That's the thing I want to make sure I talk about. We have received our ED 279, which is a document from the state that tells us how much state subsidy we're going to receive and how much locally we have to raise in order to get that. And the news there is, is, I think, very bad for us. We're losing approximately $270,000. That's huge. And as bad as that is, the, if the governor had not added money, $45 million to GPA for schools, it would have been worse. And the primary reason we've lost that amount of money is due to a reduction in students. That is directly related to what's happened with COVID this year. We got a tiny break on that because a few years ago, they started doing, averaging the students. So we had a pretty big drop this year. But when you average that with last year's students, it, it minimizes the impact about 50%. Next year, theoretically, the, if our numbers rebound a little bit, or even if they stay about the same, then the net impact for, for the 279 should be not that much. So we're, if we could figure out a way to weather the storm, we should be in pretty good shape. We should expect more students back. And, you know, therefore, we should expect more money. It won't recover as quickly, you know, the flip side of averaging so that we didn't have as big a loss as you also average on the other side. So if we gain 60 kids next year, we're only, only going to give credit to 30. But right now, that, that, that's the number we're working with. The loss of 30 students this year impacted us in almost the entire amount of money, almost that entire $270,000. So if we gain 60 kids back next year, we're only going to net gain 30. But, but I've just said it to you. If we net gain 30 next year through the average, we end up with a plus $270,000. We should be in, that'll put us in much better shape. So it's going to be a huge challenge. It's going to, it's going to require everybody to do the best they can and pare the number down as much as possible. Because if you think about that, what that really means is if we came in with a zero budget, exactly the number we had last year, there's still a $270,000 hit to the Winthrop taxpayers. So anything above what we had last year, which is going to be a bigger hit. But Joe, I think you all understand this pretty well. If you don't, you'd have to spend more time talking about it. A zero budget, the reason I started with a fixed cost, a zero budget is not a zero budget. A zero budget is a, is a decrease. All of our numbers, all those things are going up. The collective bargaining agreements are going up. The fuel costs are going up. The electricity is going up. All those fixed costs are rising. So if we keep our budget flat and our expenses increase, we're, we're facing a deficit. So those of you who joined the town council meeting, I, I shared that, and town manager Corbett shared that after. Try to just plant that seed with the town, town council to say, if you want us to come in at zero, understand that it's going to be a huge loss. If 85% of our budget is staff, that's, that's a potential cut that's going to be, you know, even more dramatic for us. And Winthrop has, has had more than its fair share of staff reductions in program losses over the last, you know, five to 10 years. So we have to do everything we can to try to avoid that. So that's the challenge that lies before us. So, sorry for the bad news, but I think, you know, we will stop working on budget in earnest. I think we have an extra meeting scheduled, a budget workshop scheduled in March. So we have three meetings in March. We may stop a little bit next meeting. And I, the last thing I wanted to say with respect to finances is I did just receive, either last Friday or Monday, losing track of time, the management letter from the auditor. So we should have some information with respect to our audit. It's, you know, very soon. And I can't even give you a, I have not had a chance to spend any time with it, so I can't even give you a sense of where things stand. But. Under resignations, Chris Curry, computer technician, has resigned, and he is done. I'm going to talk more about that later because I want to talk about some scenarios and fill in the acquisition. And as I said, you have my written report, which was sent out before, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about that at this time.
I've got a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
This was posed to me, and the question was, is that it referred to remote teachers. And my understanding is that, is that we have five remote teachers in the system?
Correct.
And these people basically teach people who are going to school through remote facilities. They don't do classroom. And at some point, it would be possible for those people to not teach remotely anymore after we get through the pandemic, which unfortunately, we don't, we can't plan on it being this summer.
Correct.
You know, hopefully, it won't be much, much longer than that, but it will take place after we have all the vaccinations and everything else.
Yep.
So we hired those people, and we replaced them, I think mostly with hiring someone else. Where does the funding, does the funding for that come out of the COVID money?
So as I mentioned earlier, for the first half of the year, until the summer, we had budgeted all of that in COVID relief funds.
Okay.
That money ran out at the end of December, and the school committee voted, I think it was sometime in November, to continue those positions. And, and those money, that money's coming out of the regular budget from now to the end of April with those, those remote teachers, as well as the additional, what do we call the COVID ed techs. And I, I still want to say, as much as possible, and I want you guys to hear as much as possible, that based upon the information that I'm getting, it is, it is my intent, unless you don't support this at some point, that we return to 100% in-person in the fall. I think because of the, where we are, where we are with, with adult vaccinations, where we are with the O2 Prime here in the buildings, everywhere except the old wing and the grade school. And what I'm hearing from the epidemiologists and other people, we should, we really should be able to do, we should be able to have school, the biggest, biggest obstacle that's going to get in our way, and this is our biggest challenge, this has to change. It's the distancing rule. As long as it stays six feet, it would be virtually impossible to come back 100% in the fall if 100% of the kids came back. Right now, and that's important for you to know because the other, the other pressure we're going to get all over the state is happening, even, even President Biden's 100-day plan to get kids back in school. You know, that's a generic statement, and I don't think it applies to us here in Winthrop. We can't physically put more kids in our buildings than we have right now. We are at 80% of attendance system-wide. We can manage that. We are managing that, I should say, to be able to do the six-foot distancing and such. If we, if we somehow get pressure, or you get pressured to bring all those other 20% remote learners back into class before the end of this school year, we don't physically have the space to do that. I think we've been pretty clear. I think the administrators have been very clear from the very beginning that that's, you know, we've, we've been very fortunate that the, essentially 80% of our kids have chosen to be in-person district-wide, and we do that 80% of the time, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Very few schools, in fact, I don't know any other school in the state that's doing the same model we are. So I think when I hear about other schools wanting to bring their kids back, I think that those are, those are schools that basically now in-person serving about 40% of their kids, bringing that up to 60 to 80%. I don't see, I don't see how we could change what we're doing here in Winthrop from now to the end of the year. I think we, we've made the commitment, and I would implore you all to stay with the commitment to, to continue to do what we're doing from, from now to the end of the year. And the biggest thing for us, as I said, if we're going to, our staff will be vaccinated, those who want to be, by the end of, soon. We've already begun the process, the protocol of, of making a list of who's going to be, who's going to be vaccinated. Our schools are already safe because of the investments we made with the original Corona mon, uh, funds. And students may or may not get the vaccination by, by the fall. That really is somewhat irrelevant. The, I don't say that it's important, but it's not an obstacle. But if, if they don't change the rule from six feet to three feet, we're still going to be in, we're still going to be in trouble.
Joe?
As a follow-up, when you listen to the discussion in Washington about new money, and part of the package being discussed seems to be that, especially after the meeting with Senator Collins and the president and that group, you know, agreement that they're going to put more money into the schools. So it is, so I guess the question really becomes is that if we get more money, then we could perhaps apply that to costs that are now coming out of the current budget?
Absolutely. Yeah, and I think, and thank you for asking it that way because that's a little different twist, but it's kind of where I was trying to go. I think we have money in the regular budget now if we get nothing. I, and we, but we also have two funding sources that we have more flexibility with. You remember, you may remember with the initial coronavirus money, we had very little flexibility, and that money is now 100% spent. So the ESAR funds, both what we refer to as CARES 1 and ESAR 2, both allow us a great deal more flexibility. So if we indeed run into an issue with funding or having enough funds in our regular budget, we can go to that. And the good thing about, about both those monies, the first CARES Act and the, in the second round, is we have two plus years to spend that money. So we don't have to commit, in fact, sort of almost intentionally dragging my feet a little bit to, to see how things play out because we, and even if we made a commitment, and, you know, Jeff and Meggin can certainly tell you this, you know, we, we made a commitment to the CARES Act pretty much right off the bat, and that actually needs to be modified. We haven't modified it yet. And we modified because we made, we had a pretty substantial amount of money in the air for bussing for the rest of the year. We got a reduction in the bussing, but we haven't changed the ESAR grant yet because we don't really know exactly how to reallocate. Or, or I shouldn't say not how. We know how, but just not exactly sure where we want to reallocate those monies. So we have some flexibility.
Well, if I could just end by saying, Mr. Superintendent, I appreciate your explanation because, quite frankly, I don't think the same explanation of what's going on is getting out to other school board members across the state or to the public in general. And I was deliberately trying to get you to go more in-depth on these things that you were talking about because I think this information is extremely important for people to understand where, where we're at, what we can do.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I, and I do feel like, and, you know, the administrators here, you can certainly ask them, but I think it's been a, it's been a topic of conversation that we've had a lot as an administrative team about both the funding we have and, and where to spend it. So it's a, it's a group effort.
Do you want to give your reminders?
Oh, you know what? You have, I don't have the updated agendas.
No, you can say.
Yeah, I do want to remind everybody that the next school committee will be on February 24th. We have vacations, so that meeting wouldn't happen then. And remind you all that on March 9th, there will be a special election, and the high school will be remote that day, and the election will be held here at Winthrop High School. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. For my report, so Jana and I provided warrant training for Kelly on Monday, February 1st. Kelly's a very quick study, and is ready to take her place on that committee. So I wanted to say thank you to Kelly and to Jana for providing me training. And then the school committee attended a two-hour school board workshop provided by Steve Bailey, who is the executive director of Main School Management Association. And that was on January 27th. And we reviewed the purpose and duties of a school committee, as well as the chair and its members' role and duty, the role of the superintendent, the nature of superintendent and committee relationship, the importance of a code of ethics, what makes a committee effective. Some of the examples for that are regular self-evaluation and professional development. We went over some Robert's Rules of Order. And most of those were done in the context of our own Winthrop policies, which was really excellent the way Mr. Bailey put that together. And as a committee, we found it informative and beneficial to spend that time together, in particular because we have two new committee members. And I'd just like to thank the superintendent for organizing that, and we look forward to more workshops in the future. Committee reports. Finance.
During our warrant training, we accomplished, well, let me go back because I haven't reported out since the beginning, I don't believe. So I did email all of these to, or to Colleen as well. But general warrant, 12A, and 12, yeah, 12A and 13. Payroll, 12, 13, 13A, 14, 14A, 15, and 16. And food service, 6 and 7. And there are, we do have a couple of more warrants to get caught up on, but we were all caught up with payroll, so.
Okay, thank you. The policy committee met before this meeting, and we went over all of the policies that are on our agenda today. So we'll go into more detail about those when we, when we get those agenda items. Negotiations. Joe?
Well, I know the superintendent and I are very glad that Kelly has joined us. That gives me another supporter, so now it's two to one. We've had, we've had our opening session with the Teachers Association. It went very well. We got the ground rules decided. We got people to volunteer to take notes and make some changes. And we've already exchanged some financial information. And at the next session, we'll be exchanging some wording on various issues that we had. As compared to three years ago, we're about three months ahead at this particular point. And I think the goal between both groups, we need to get this done because for one thing, with all the things affecting our budget and affecting the town and its, its tax rate, et cetera, we need to get this information together early. And so I'm very pleased with that, and I look forward to the next meeting and seeing if we can keep moving in the right direction. Kelly, we appreciate you double-duting because the committees are concerned. Thank you, and I could probably do it without the superintendent at this point.
It's good with me.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Oh, did you have more to say?
No, no, I'm doing.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there any report from the ad hoc committees? Curriculum note? And how about renovation, new construction?
No, I, I will say that I need, I'm feeling more and more necessary to reach out to Department of Education to begin the dialogue with them. Scott Brown is the gentleman's name. And I, I guess I'm saying that because the gentleman who I've been working with or have worked with in the past, I told, as I explained before, has been dealing with the CRF 1 funds. He was the only person initially who was doing it, so he's still very tied up with that. And then I just recently found out that he's going to be doing more with the new ESAR funds. So he's going to have additional responsibilities around finances. So I can't wait for him to, to free up, to begin the process because it's going to be a lengthy process. And winning power will all the piano for me, so.
I got two nights to you.
All right, for a special report tonight, we have Megan White about Wednesday expectations.
So, uh, I guess if you could come, just stand up in front of the owl, we can see you and hear you.
So, hi everyone, I wanna echo Superintendent Hodgekin's message, that's nice to see you all in person for the first time this year. I haven't met many of you before, and I'm glad to be here. So I want to give you an update on all of our district-wide practices for our remote learning Wednesdays right now. As you know, these days, um, our teachers are in-building, working collaboratively and independently to process, prepare, and reflect on their practice so far this year. Wednesdays are the busiest day for me, as I'm fortunate enough to work with all the teachers across all of the buildings. I've never been around a group of teachers so thankful to have this time and this space that these Wednesdays allow us here. For many, it's a time to restructure their pacing, to look closely at student data to determine next steps and interventions, to troubleshoot technology, or to problem-solve new ways to support students with grade-level teams. There's no question that teachers really, really find value in these Wednesdays. The student use of these Wednesdays has evolved a lot since I first reported on them earlier this fall. The volume and rigor of work varies greatly from grade level to grade level, and even somewhat by student. Grade-level PLCs at the grade school often work collaboratively to develop their Wednesday plans, to touch several content areas. Each teacher assigns reading, writing, and math, while often asking students to engage in additional topics. Again, these planets vary greatly. So I'm gonna give you a few examples from certain grade levels. Pre-K focuses their Wednesday work around a themed learning menu each week that includes listening to a read aloud, science and social studies activities, math, art, and a movement or music activity or game. This week's theme, you can probably guess, was around snow, and all of the activities were centered around a read aloud that the teachers did, which was Snowballs by Lois Elhart. First grade and kindergarten center their work around reinforcing skills and strategies that they're presenting in their classes. They work on writing skills, handwriting, math practice that's aligned to their envisioned programming, and reading. They aim for student independence on these days, since many are at an age where they may be in a daycare or working around parents who are working at home on these remote Wednesdays. Second and third grade incorporates additional technology pieces, and has regular use of CSO in second grade and Google Docs in third grade. They have students utilize Epic, which is a digital library subscription for kids. They do digital sorts on Google Slides. They use Scholastic News and Mystery Science. The older students at the grade school are immersed in similar technology, but are also assigned to watch videos from Teachers College that support their live daily instruction. Math assignments are intentionally built into Spiral, having students practice both older and newer content every week. Art at the grade school has expanded since the beginning of the year, so it's offering more things catered to different grade-specific needs. And the Learning Lab also does work with students, having them work on their reading and rereading for fluency. The Learning Lab staff also on these days work with individual teachers to target and develop, um, specific things for students to help them strengthen whatever skills they need in our targeting in their in-person learning lab, programming. The remote teachers at the grade school levels have shared that they use this time to actually incorporate more family involvement. They're in front of a screen all day with these teachers. So at K one, they're asking their students to play fun games and math games with their family members if they're available. The older remote students are asked to be more independent. These teachers also use this time to work with students one-on-one, the remote teachers, and to complete necessary assessments that require additional time to be done remotely. Middle school teachers use this time also to reinforce what is being done in the classroom. Students still that practice days will often occur on Wednesdays, and use this time to study by completing study guides or quizlets online, practice skills using math concepts or geography work, and complete ongoing projects. They also may be asked to watch a teacher-created or teacher-founded video or slide deck and answer questions about comprehension. Several LA teachers use Wednesday work to prepare students for upcoming reading and writing. Videos students watch may introduce an idea or provide a hook. They might complete graphic organizers or a skeleton of a paper that will be refined as the week progresses, or to do research that will help support their ongoing work in writing. Students are asked, asked to access Scholastic News also here and UZELA to, um, keep up with current events. My favorite activity that was shared by one of the teachers at the middle school was they asked a student to find their favorite Martin Luther King quote. And I know on social media in January, you see them everywhere, right? So, once they found a quote, they had to write about how it connects to current events and/or their life, and they were encouraged to represent their ideas with another piece of art. This was not in our class, and that was their Wednesday assignment. Several teachers at the middle school have also had individual meets on Wednesdays with students to provide additional supports that are both academic and emotional. These teachers have students working on their technology fluency daily in class. They're all readily accessed through Google Classrooms, they turn in assignments online, they interact with Jamboards, Documents, and Kami. One teacher shared that her students have said that they like to have low-tech options on Wednesdays, and that she found that students really appreciate, probably more than ever, having discussions and doing math games hands-on in our activities. With the limitations of our in-person environment, she has assigned any of these things to be done on remote Wednesdays. Oh, sorry, it's a lot. That's really perdund, but I probably don't. At the high school, students are either a green day or a white day, which rotates weekly. This means that they have four classes to work on and complete assignments for. This varies greatly from class to class and content area, and even within the timing of a human. These days are not always about reinforcing learned skills like the younger grades, but they often allow opportunities for students to have new learning, uh, new learning period. Students have watched videos of labs being conducted and make conjectures, they revise writing pieces based on teacher feedback, they might even have a conference with a teacher about the improvements that they need to make. They might watch a teacher-created flipped lesson on how to do a math skill using a calculator. At the middle school and high school, students are asked to fill out fitness logs each Wednesday. I cannot share everything, though I feel like I shared a lot of these folks about how these Wednesdays are used. I'm so happy to also share with the committee right now how grateful that the teachers are that they have these days and that they can depend on these days, as it means to get themselves prepared to tackle their pandemic classrooms that are both in-person and virtual. So they're really, really thankful now.
So let me jump in with a couple of things, um, before we let Megan off the hook here. You guys, think of all the questions you wanna ask her. And I've had a chance to think about this, because when this was sort of brought up and there was, there, there seemed to be some, I don't know how, how much, I haven't heard a great deal of concern, but I know some of you have. And for me, it was a little frustrating, because I think it was, for me, felt like a little lack of perspective. I know I'm new in this system, I know there was some frustration about things last, last spring, uh, but I just think overall, our, our staff is doing an amazing job. And I, and I mentioned earlier, we have eighty percent of our kids in school, eighty percent of the time, and that means eighty percent of the time, our kids have an opportunity to, uh, in, interact with their teacher, um, in person. And that is the time, more than, than most other schools, where new information is being shared, extensions are going on, the interactions of the one-on-one, um, connections with the students are happening at all levels, at the, at the pre-K level, at the high school level, at the middle school level, all the way through the system, it's happening, and our teachers have been amazing. And so when I got the sense that there was some knock on our Wednesdays, and therefore, by extension, say our remote days like yesterday, uh, that they weren't rigorous enough, it was a little hard for me to hear that, because I know how hard people are working, and I know how hard it is to get students to do the work that you want them to do when they're sitting right in front of you. Uh, when they're not in front of you, then it's more challenging. And it's never been my expectation as a superintendent, and I, and I hope I've shared this clearly with, with people, although I intend to reinforce this, that remote days, unless we are completely remote for an extended period of time, where obviously new learning would have to occur, but remote days and Wednesdays, uh, by their nature, and if you look, if you go back and look at, uh, people who, the great gurus in educational structure, somebody like Madeline Hunter, those are, us really old, remember Madeline Hunter. You know, she would say, those days are for what she would refer to as independent practice, that our students have the opportunity through technology to interact with their teachers when they're struggling, to get some questions answered, do whatever they need to do is great, but it's not intended for new learning, it's not intended for new instruction. That's hard enough to do when you're face-to-face in person. It really is intended to extend or create, uh, an opportunity for students to do work in which they demonstrate. There's an expectation that they already know this stuff, and so you say, show me, whatever way that happens. So, um, just like it's a whole different conversation about homework, homework shouldn't be frustration, shouldn't be, shouldn't be frustrating, it should be, again, independent practice. So I, I think it's just really important that people understand that, that it was never our intention that our remote days and our Wednesdays would be as rigorous or as difficult, for lack of a better term, as our in-person, uh, days. So, um, add that to everything Megan's saying, I think it, it hopefully gives you a sense of, uh, you know, whatever. And I guess the last thing I would just say is, is I think, historically, I've done this job for a long time, not this job, but I've done this, this work for a long time, and teachers never get to do what they deserve for how hard they work. And now that I know they're, they're working so much difficult, I mean, so much harder than they've ever had to, um, it, I'm, I guess I'm a little less, I'm a little more sensitive to hearing people say, oh, they're only working four-fifths of the time, and they're only doing this, or they're only doing that, you know, um, it's, it's really hard to hear. Our teachers are, are going above and beyond. I was standing right in this auditor, uh, whatever it is, the Homing Out Center, last Wednesday, um, acknowledging to the high school staff, that could be doing it for all the staffs. You know, they've, they've been four and five people short every day, not every day, but for long periods of time, and they fill in for each other, and they cover each other, and they do all, all the things that needs to happen to make it work. And so it's, our people are, are doing an amazing job, and I think as school committee members, if you hear people, you know, um, saying that they're concerned, send them our way, send them, send them to Megan, send them to me, send them to Mark, send them to Jess, send them to Jolene, and, you know, whatever, Will, Karen, she, she's on there, I don't wanna, I think we forgot about her. You know, because I think, I think they don't understand how hard people are working and what a great job, and, you know, certainly Josh and Amelie can speak about what the experience has been like here, but, and you've heard from them before. But I think it's important, I'm glad, um, Joe asked to, to do this, because I think, it doesn't hurt to take the time to, to, to share with you guys everything that's going on, so you can be reminded as well.
So, hi, say something?
Yes, Jana?
Um, thank you, Mrs. White, for that, um, description of what's going on on Wednesdays. And I'm appreciative to the fact that you broke it down by grade level or by grade chunk, because it is a whole completely different thing for little kids, as it was. I teach in a K, a pre-k grade school, and I was down talking with the first-grade teachers, and we were talking about Zooming during daycare, and the fact that there are, you know, maybe six or seven kids with all different Zoom schedules, and it doesn't always work. And then also the fact of some kids not being able to do anything until their parents get home at five o'clock, at no fault of their own. So, um, those are real things that are going on in the remote world still that are at no, um, you know, nobody's fault, but as teams and as teachers and students and parents all working together, they're figuring some of those things out, but they are completely different needs, and I'm sure those Wednesdays are being used to figure out some of those things as well, so I'm appreciative of those as well. Also, um, I, I got some feedback from, Jim had sent out, Superintendent Hodgekin had sent out a message about remote learning, um, and there were a lot of teachers that were very appreciative, um, for that, just with that clarification that it's not supposed to be overly rigorous during these remote days and during these Wednesdays, and just they appreciated that clarification, um, on that as well. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Joe?
Yeah, Megan, now, thank you very much, because I wrote down a nice column of things that, that are going on at different levels, and I think that's extremely important. That's another reason I asked for it. I said, the more information we get out as to what's going on is extremely important. But there are a couple of situations going on, and one of them like came up today on Facebook. Had a nice family that was out skiing in Sugarlooke today, okay? Now, people say, now, do you, do you encourage that? And I said, look, here's my way of viewing it. We do not intend on remote day that they're gonna spend their whole day doing schoolwork. They've got assignments to do, and some kids to get it done quickly, some people can't. But quite frankly, if the parent decides that today's the day they're gonna take off to the mountain, you know, as long as they get the work done, I'm not really too worried about it. But the issue that first came up to me was that not everybody does the work at the same level as their colleague student does. And they were concerned that there might be a, you know, let me just give you the, the basic example. Twenty kids are in the class. There's a little assignment for them to do, to pass in or to bring to class on Thursday. And ten of them do it, ten don't. What do you do? Do you take and wait for the other ten to do it, to pass it in, or how do you go along? How do you push further on when not everybody is pedaling at the same level? And that was the basic concern, is that, you know, rightfully so, I think, other students complain, why am I being penalized for doing the work when you give time the next day for somebody else to do the work? And I'm not saying everybody does it, okay? This is the problem, and I say, how many times does this happen? Well, it happened once, and that's the way some people feel, if it happens once, then that's a big issue. So, um, I don't think we have that big an issue, but I do think it's worth discussing as to how we take it and manage that, and particularly discussing with the students is that you gotta help this thing along and keep it going. And, uh, I, I just felt I should bring it up on behalf of the, and by the way, most of those people skiing, I happen to know, and, uh, found one father the other day in the cereal aisle up in Hannaford, said, oh, sorry, your wife and the kids are down the bag there. A couple, I was a couple, oh, no, that wasn't me. Listen, when I was a teacher here, we had a snow day, we didn't go on the night before or at five o'clock the next morning, okay? There's no way that maybe this fifteen to twenty of the snow dollars can't ski. So anyway, that's just one of the problems, though. But I appreciate what you're doing, and I appreciate you getting around to this.
Any other questions or comments? No, and I, I guess I'd just like to echo what Superintendent Hodgekin said, if there are other questions or concerns, to please, to, you know, I'm glad you're saying you have you, Megan, to, for people to go to and ask those questions and get that clarification. So, thank you for that. Okay, old business, I will entertain a motion to approve the following policies for second reading. BIA, new board member orientation, CBI, evaluation of the superintendent, and IHC, class ranking.
Subsumed?
Second. Move it seconded. And I will take a moment, because I'm on the policy committee, to just update you on those three. There's nothing, there aren't any further changes from the changes we made for our last meeting for first reading. There is one typo on policy BIA under cross-reference. It should be BIA dash R, committee member orientation checklist. But other than that, there are no further changes, so I can open it up for discussion now.
I'm gonna.
Any questions?
Joe?
Oh, Joe, okay.
I'm gonna assume that these are compliant or they are comparable to what has been recommended by Main School Management. They don't have to be perfect or, or expect that, but.
Not, not any of the three tonight, Joe, but I think some of the ones we did earlier were specifically, they were like, we crossed off the whole thing and just replaced it with the Main School Management template. We just made sure, we went through as a committee to make sure it wasn't, uh, again, doesn't apply to these tonight, but wasn't substantively different, just different, it was updated. Our goal is to keep our policies, um, the recommendation is that we should have none that are five years or older. We're probably about twenty percent there. We have a lot of work to do.
You've gotta be further along, Megan, I've spent hours on all of this, we use.
Sorry.
No, listen, no, I, I felt that they were well-written. No, listen, no, I felt that they were well-written, there wasn't any problems, but I just, the point thing to me was that we always compared to what the main school management was recommending.
Dave, you know that, I mean, anybody, school committee members should be used to this, get used to this name. Charlotte Bates is the person who does all this policy work at main school management. She is amazing, and consults with John Woodson and other legal sources in putting the policies together. So there's no reason for us to reinvent the wheel. On most of the policies, we take her lead, and then the places where we have to stay locally to adjust them, then we take our time doing that. But for the most part, what she says is really, really good.
Any other questions or comments about these three policies?
I have another question.
Okay.
We mentioned that we will recognize people who come to join us at the school, you know, in their senior year, they can get honorary recognition, you know, because of their, they would be top ten if they had, you know, been here at Winter for the required amount of time, et cetera. I thought we were also going to put in here that we would also recognize graduating juniors and give them some kind of recognition if they were, you know, would be, they would be valedictorian if they stayed our solitorian, something, or top ten, it could be any of those things.
Yeah, we did, we did talk about that. I don't recall anybody suggesting that it be part of the policy. I think, you know, that, with the practice you just said is what we intend to do.
So should that second paragraph be adjusted to say students who enroll at Winter High School during their senior year or graduating juniors?
Well, no, because it wouldn't fit, they, graduating, the kids, even if they moved in two months before graduation, they are considered, you know, they, we do the credit check to make sure that they are compliant with our expectations, and they will, they will be considered seniors, and they will be available to get whatever recognition comes their way. They would not bump class rank because the other criteria isn't met, but it doesn't stop them from graduating or getting that recognition.
I still, I'm all in favor of that. I still think we might be better off if we said something more about the juniors, though. Juniors are eligible for recognition at the level of their achievement, something like that.
Are you talking about all graduating juniors or just juniors as?
No, just graduating juniors, just graduating juniors.
But would be, the conversation we had before was in reference to somebody who might have qualified for the top ten. I'm just trying to clarify, do you mean that or do you mean any graduating junior? Whether or not they're?
Well, I think you have to treat all graduating juniors the same, okay? Now, whether they are eligible to be recognized as they would be a top ten or even a solitorian or a valedictorian depends on that individual. Thankfully, we don't have a lot of juniors graduating, but we might have more in the future, if only because of the way that we're running participation in these college credit programs, the dual credit. I mean, I happen to think that it's easier to do it now than it used to be, and so I do think we could end up with most students graduating juniors.
Joe, would you be happy with just possibly having something like graduating juniors will be noted on, I don't know if this needs to be in policy, but will be noted on like a, on the program as, I mean, the graduating, probably if they're graduating juniors, they would be graduating early, I don't know the exact verbiage there, but something like that, is that what you're looking for, Joe?
Yes. I guess I would say we disagree that, I mean, right now, kids that are graduating as juniors, I mean, whatever they graduate, they've met the criteria for graduation, they're part of that graduating class. And if we don't denote on their, whether they're graduating early, or they're graduating late, or they're graduating, whatever, on time, we don't make that distinction. So I don't know why we would, you know, it's not been much of an issue. I think we're creating more of a, more of a problem by adding more language. I think it's not been a problem, and I don't think it's going to be a problem. I think that what became a problem this year that we were struggling with, and when Mark and I went back and forth about, and Joel was a part of the conversation too, about the unique situation we had this year, it felt to me like it really created a loophole that we needed to, to adjust or close, and I think this language does it. You know, we want, we want to recognize all of our graduates, and just leave it at that, whether, for whatever accomplishments they've had, and we don't have specific language about that, but we, you know, if they, if they receive some sort of recognition, we let, we let people know about that, it's published. And so that will continue, whether they're a graduating junior, or they're, you know, it does open the door, that's what I'm hearing, or I'm fearful of that. You know, if a kid takes a fifth year in college, I mean, in high school, that should be a zero issue. We're not going, we're not going to denote that any differently. If Amelie decides to graduate this year as a sophomore, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to treat her any differently in terms of the actual ceremony. This really does specifically talk about class ranking and that's the policy it's under, so.
Yes, Joe?
But I thought we more or less agreed, we did not want to bump anybody in the true senior class.
Correct.
From receiving an honor.
Correct. And we'll recognize, like, this year's situation, for instance, that was, I think that was the resolution we came to, was somebody who's graduating, who's, has some sort of distinction, if that's the best way I could think of, we're going to recognize them for that distinction. And if we don't say that anywhere else, we just do it.
I don't have any problem with it. I just don't want them bumping.
Well, that's why.
That's why this has been put in here.
Let them in and show.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of these three policies for second reading? I'm seeing all in favor, and so the vote passes unanimously. New business. First is filling a vacant computer technician position.
Okay, this is what I was alluding to earlier. And actually, I should just clarify, because there was, I know Sue had a question, as the new committee chair. I'm just going to take a second to talk about the process. The agenda should say specifically what your intent is. So tonight is, she asked me whether we need to have a motion and a, you know, whatever, a motion on this issue, and I don't believe you need to, but regardless of that, the school committees can do multiple things as a committee. It's just about being really transparent with the community, so any community member can look at the agenda and have some idea what's going to happen. So you could, and you will, particularly if you talk about the budget, have discussions. We're going to have a lot of discussion about the budget before we make any decisions. When we think we're ready to vote on the budget, then we will have, we will have a motion that goes out to the public that suggests that we're going to have a motion. And it's okay if you have someone that says you're going to have a motion, but then you're not ready to take the motion, and so you kick the can down the road, so to speak. Where you get in trouble as a school committee is if you have a discussion item that turns into a vote. That's, that's not represent, that's not being honest with the community. They need to know that a decision is going to be made. So maybe that doesn't make sense right now, hopefully it will as we, as we proceed. So this item tonight is really a discussion item. I want to discuss with you what I'd like to do. Mike is here, and actually, he gave me a whole list of stuff, which unfortunately I didn't print off, Mike, so, oh, there you go. The technology guys, good. To talk about what's going on. I'm going to cut to the chase. The, we have presently in our, in our system, a technology coordinator, Mr. Delisle, and we have a ed tech, computer ed tech, who was formerly Mr. Craig, who you saw earlier has resigned. And that leaves us with a vacancy. I'm going to, I'm going to ask, and it doesn't require a vote, but I would like to fill that position, and I would like to put in the budget for two positions for next year. That's not creating, here's the distinction, that's not creating a new position. That's, that's allowing us to expand the number of people. We don't, like, every time we change the teachers, we don't vote on a new teacher. We vote to, you know, say, we have two, we're going to have three. That's, that's a budget decision, it's not a, a, just, you know, that type of vote for the, for the board. So I want to, I want to make the case with you tonight, with Mike's support and the administrative support if they want to, that we need, we need another technician in the system. And all I want to do real quickly is point out to you, just look at the recent history. Some of you were involved with the school system a year ago, maybe a little more than a year ago, when in the, at the eleventh hour, it was more than a year ago, at the eleventh hour, the staff, the computer staff at that time all quit, and you were left with nobody to do your technology. There are a number of reasons for that, we can argue about the reasons that that happened is, but my point is, it happened. We made a decision to contract with a provider last year, and I, my opinion is, from the outside looking in, that they did the best job they could, but they're not really, they're not really for school, dealing with schools. We're the only school system that company works with in that capacity. So I think the school committee was wise, realized that situation, realized we needed to bring our own people in, and so created the position of technology coordinator and an ed tech. Halfway through this school year, one of those two people has left. My sense is, the job is exceptional overwhelming, and the needs of our staff pre-K through 12 is very, very different. And so to ask one person to essentially do the oversight from a, from a infrastructure, contract type of situation, and then have somebody else do all of the needs of the teachers and implementation and integration of the technology and stuff, is just setting us up for the same thing, that it's a, it's a high burnout expectation, and I think that the chances of history repeating itself, if we don't learn from it, is great, that our technology department will continue to have turnover year after year after year if we don't put enough people in the position, positions to make the job manageable. I think Mike and Chris have both done an amazing job of digging out of a very big hole that they inherited. They weren't alone, a lot of people have helped, you know, we keep, keep picking on Megan, I don't mean to do that, but, you know, Megan has certainly pitched in her, her expertise, which is a lot, teachers at all the grade levels, we've had people that are amazing, we hired people that are amazing, but it's not their job. So you can't realistically expect them to continue to do that, and they all pitched in to get things kind of where they are at now. And so when this, when this happened, when Mr. Craig decided to get done, Mike and I spent some time together, and it was really, really obvious that, I think unless we take a real hard look and we invest in the support for technology in our system, that we're not, that we're just going to continue to lose people, and we'll be starting over every, you know, if not every year, pretty much every, every year. It's really, really challenging. So I would like to, we've advertised for the position because we have the vacancy. From that pool of applicants, I would like to hire two people, and I would like to add to the budget, which you will get to vote on specifically, and you obviously get to have a lot of say in terms of how many teachers we have, how many ed techs we have, how many, you know, whatever we have. That's when you have that conversation, and ultimately you'll vote on the budget, you won't vote on the positions. You vote on the positions when they're brand new. Computer ed tech is not a brand new position. Expanding it is what we're looking to do. So Sue and I had a conversation about whether this requires a vote or not. I don't believe it does, because it's not about creating the position, it's about going from one to two. And so your question for me as a, as your superintendent is, can we afford to do this? And if you don't think it's, it's, we can make a case to support the need for it, then this is the time to have the conversation. And I, there's a lot more that I can say, but Mike has spent a lot of time looking at what his, what his year's been like, what things were like for Chris, and where he sees the future of this. So he can tell you about some of the, you already know, it would be good for you to hear some of the changes that we've made this year. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike, if you guys don't mind.
I suppose I can go that way. I just kind of put together a list and then sent it to Jim, I think, earlier, and I was talking to him earlier this week. And some of the stuff folks may not be completely aware of, you know, we've spent a great deal of our COVID money on infrastructure and technology that was aging here at the school. You know, so some other changes this year that happened is we put four additional grades pre-K through second grade, which Jolene or Jeff, between 200 and 220 between those grades as far as the number of students go. So there's those additional devices that were responsible for, teachers got second All in all, what that means is right now there's about 1,100 devices in the district. I'm the guy at the moment. Next year, there'll be 230 new laptops for the high school, all of those you do manage, inventory, all of the software and updates all pushed out to them. Next year as well, third, fourth, and fifth grade will have new Chromebooks, 195 of them, as we push all of the grade school students, one-to-one devices to Chromebooks and away from the previous MacBooks. That will, you know, budget tariff-wise will, you know, save us money, since Chromebooks are greatly less expensive than a MacBook. In addition to that, infrastructure, I found since I've been here and kind of uncovering stuff from the beginning, all of our servers that kind of run things in the background, there's approximately two each school, all of those are over five years old, are all out of warranty, and there's a limited amount of backups on this. So we purchased three additional pieces of equipment, which is a new canic system. What that means, ultimately, I'm going to bring everything to the high school. It'll have battery backup and generator backup, and all three schools will operate off of that equipment. It has enough capacity to do all three schools for the next, you know, five years. It has a great deal of expanded capacity that we don't have today, because even on top of the age of that equipment, there's not enough storage for data, and there's not enough memory in that equipment to continue to expand today. So there's just a few things that have been going on additionally in that list. Wireless. High school and middle school have been on what's called MLTI program for wireless devices. All that equipment is being retired. Through that COVID money, I purchased all new wireless access points for all three schools. So that'll be another project, this summer, all three schools need to be updated for wireless access points. Each one of those access points is fed by a network switch. Forget how many off the top of my head, maybe 25 currently, that can be reduced, so there'll be about 19 new switches and routers that'll be put in place. So all of those things, what are going on in the background that run, you know, the technology infrastructure, it all needs to be replaced. So having, you know, that additional staffing and help will aid towards all of those processes and supporting it moving forward.
Any questions? Kelly?
I have kind of two questions. The current vacancy that you'll be hiring for is a full-time position?
Yes.
And the second position that you'd like to add will also be a full-time position?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I add to that? And I've only been here for six or seven months, but my understanding in years previous, there had been people labeled as like technology ed techs in each building that also supported technology, that weren't, I don't think, if I'm saying it right, not part of the technology team specifically, but they handled certain things in each building that related to technology. And that was eliminated last year.
Mike, when I think of ed techs, I think of ed techs that worked the school year. It sounds to me like you're talking about these ed techs are gonna have to work year-round. Because you've got all this, especially in the summer and everything else, okay? So we'd have to budget then for a year, well, I don't know how much the salary will be, but basically it's a year-round type of position for ed techs, which is fine with me. I mean, I don't question at all that you need it. I think that you're actually talking about especially providing people that can help the teachers do a better job of equipment.
It's not an ed tech, right?
Well, it's not.
Just a technician.
It's an educational technician, but I mean, Joe, you're right. The, the difference, even the one we have right now was a year-round position. And the first one we're looking to hire would also be a year-round position, because your assessment is spot on. A lot of the work they do for re-imaging and, and all the other work they need to do does happen during summer.
Just adding to what Jim said, each one of those laptops, each year it changes hands potentially. Sometimes it may go back to the same student, other times it's going to different students. So every year, all those, you know, sweeping devices, you know, 800 and 900 of them, since we have spares, all come back in, and they need to go through that process annually, every year. It's a lot of hands on.
Any questions, Janice?
Oh, so we're do, so filling the position this year, but not hiring until the next budget? Or are you looking to fill two positions this year?
We're looking to fill two positions this year.
And we don't have to vote on that?
No. You've created a position, and you don't hire hourly people. I hire hourly people. I just need to make sure that you are aware, and if you're not supportive of adding a second person, then you would object to that.
Yeah, no, I am in full support of, of hiring five of them. I mean, I, I, I work in a school. I don't know how they did it without technology people in their buildings and in their schools, and how only two of them are doing it now, so. I just wanted to be clear on that's what you're looking for, so.
What I meant, and, and we would obviously have to be clear, I'm gonna have to make the case, we're gonna have to make the case through the budget process. Right now, we budgeted for one. Next year, we're gonna be budgeting for two. What I'm really hoping we can do is convince you by bringing somebody in, and they do an amazing job, and you can see that their value and, and that you'll support it through the budget process. And if for some reason you don't, then we end up cutting the position. But, you know, we're still, and Mike has done a great job, and Chris was doing a great job, and they're still, they're getting out of the hole, so to speak, and so, it's, I, I think it really is necessary. I think I was very happy as the superintendent to give it a shot with the one, you know, one coordinator, one technician. And I'll be honest with you guys, if it wasn't for the expertise that some of the teacher staff at all, at grade school, at the middle school, at the high schools, matter of fact, without naming anybody in particular, here at the high school, well, one of them standing back there, definitely can name her if we want, has, you know, gone way above and beyond. But we also hired a person who actually did that job in a different school system last year, not our school system, we brought it here. And we've, we've just been very, very blessed. But I think it's one thing to make do, but I don't, I don't think it's fair or, or smart of us to ask those people who already have full-time jobs to do other things, continue to do other things. And then I, and I already sort of picked on Megan, I should again, but, you know, I think, I think you're more like Mike's counselor now, right? But, you know, she has, she has a great deal of expertise, and so people have, people have just been doing what they need to do. But that's not a great way, it's not a way that I'm comfortable as a superintendent supporting as a, as an ongoing way to do business. And I think we need to put the people in, we need to create the positions, and we need to put great people in those positions. And then those other people can be even more amazing at their jobs.
My only other comfort being then retaining them.
Yes.
I think, because the biggest issue there is like, I came in, you know, a third-party company had rented things last year. So there's, there's no documentation, there's no guidance, so you're kind of, you know, hit the road running, and you gotta figure it out. And, you know, asking them questions along the way, there's a lot of stuff they didn't have their hands in and didn't know of. So, there's a lot of, you know, months spent trying to get to speed. So if that department continues to turn over, you're doing that over and over and over, and it's not efficient.
So, the last thing that I have to say has nothing to do with this, particularly with this discussion, but it's why I spent some time earlier. I don't believe that you have to vote on this. I believe you created the position. Not hearing objection to letting us, you know, make it go from one to two, I don't think that requires a vote of the board. However, if you think that, you have the right to do that. So if you would prefer that we take a formal vote next meeting, so I talked about that earlier. It's not on, on the agenda tonight to vote on. If you feel like we need to vote on it, say that now, and we'll add it to the next agenda.
I, I feel I would be more comfortable if we formally voted on it at the next agenda.
So all it takes is one. I didn't mean that that way. All it takes is one person to object, let's just say.
I don't think, you know, I, I have no problem with the first person, because we have a vacancy. They have some budget. It's the second one, that you have to find money for to start them now, to do that job, because I have no question that we need the second one.
So just so you know, the, the process is going to be, we've advertised, so, I don't, I'm, I'm sorry, sir, I really did not mean that the way it sounded. Because we are, we're advertising, so we didn't, we didn't advertise for one, we advertised for "and", you know, so, and, and a computer ed tech, so with any luck, we'll get multiple applications. We'll, we'll ultimately interview multiple people. And then, this is, the only thing that sticks for me is we're now going three weeks before our next meeting instead of, you know, two weeks. So it just means we'll, well, actually it'll save us a little tiny bit of money, a little tiny bit, and Mike will just go a little crazier between now and then. But if we're lucky enough to handle, to hire one person, I really don't, don't, I'm not, really not bothered by that.
You could move forward with that one person.
We will, we will, we will, we've already started, yeah, we've already started that we've advertised, and so, there's nothing. You just need to, yeah. I am, I am concerned that we're gonna set that precedent in the future when we expand from one to whatever, three, four, if we need extra English teachers or extra grade school teachers or whatever. But that's fine, so we'll, we'll add that to the meeting. Are you calling, add that to the 24th? Okay, good, thank you. Thank you, Mike.
It was interesting.
All right, I will entertain a motion to enter into the 2020, 2021 Cooperative Agreement with Capital Area Technical Center.
So moved?
Second. Moving seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote, all those in favor. I also vote in favor, so that passes unanimously. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the following policies for the first reading. BBAB, School Board Self-Evaluation. BCC, Nepotism. BE, School Committee Meetings. BEDB Agenda. BEDBR Agenda Format. DJ, Bidding Purchasing Requirements. DJH, Purchasing and Contracting Procurement Staff Code of Conduct. FF, Naming of an Area Within a School or on School Property. FFA, Memorials. FFE, naming of an area within a school or on school property checklist. IHBAA, Referral in General for Education Interventions. IHBAR, Referral Procedures in General Education Interven, excuse me, Interventions. IHBAC, Child Find. JFAB, Admission of Non-Resident Students. JKAA, Use of Physical Restraint and Seclusion. JKAR, Physical Restraint and Seclusion Administrative Procedure.
Wow, so moved. Please don't make me read that.
Second, second. Moved in seconded. Before we move into discussion.
Actually, I have a clarification, Chris. I just noticed this area, it's, memorials is FFA, not FFA, not FAF-A, F-F dash A, it's just FFA.
FFA, okay.
So if the first, if the mover and the second are okay with that, that would become the motion.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we enter into discussion, I thought as a policy committee member, I would go over any changes that might be on those policies. Everyone's had a chance to read them and see the changes, and Mr. Harkin had also given an explanation of the changes. At our committee meeting tonight, we did come across a few other changes we wanted to make that I'll go over with you, and then we can go over any discussion that anybody might have. The first policy that we made a change to this evening was BCC nepotism. Under the paragraph exceptions, it had been stricken out of prove and put in support, and we changed it back to approve.
No.
I thought we did.
I thought we just struck the line and added in the last line. So that's, that's a very interesting, you may want to consider making it approve slash support, because during the course of this conversation, our conversation, and that's actually what I would recommend, you don't approve coaches or hourly employees, but you do approve teachers and administrators. So, during our conversation, Sue did bring up that point, and she's correct, that if it's a professional staff member, you need to approve it. So, I think it actually needs to stay both approve slash support.
And then, at the bottom of that paragraph, it had been splashed, and the candidate is not exposed as a committee member, and we decided to keep that.
So that is back in there?
Yes.
Yes, that's gonna remain in there.
So all of these changes, as we review them, I will, I will make these changes again and send them back out to you. And after Sue's done, I wanna review the process, because this is gonna be a little confusing. So, I'm trying to make it simple. I may be a little confusing, but making it simple.
Okay, so the next policy that we talked about tonight was DJ bidding purchasing requirements. And if you look on page three of that policy at the very bottom, the highlighted area that says local vendors preferred, the way it was written into this policy was under RFP procedures, letter D, and then we discussed that, that the intention of that, adding that to the policy was for all procedures, so that needs to come out and make be its own heading, not under RFP procedures.
I think you may have to say that again, because I didn't quite get it.
Okay, so if you look under the letter D under RFP procedures, that's the piece that was added. Local vendors preferred. But the way that's written in the policy right now, that's only applying to the RFP procedures. But the intention was for it to be for the bidding procedures as well.
So can I comment on that now? Or do I need to wait?
You wanna wait?
Sure.
Okay, let's just get through these changes, and then we can go over the ones that people have, have discussion.
Perfect.
Okay, the next is FF. At the very bottom of the cross-reference, it should write, read FF dash E, Naming of an Area Within a School, not FF dash R. And then under the next, the policy, actually, it isn't a policy, it's an exhibit, FF, it should be FFE, not FFR. That's the checklist.
Didn't we make one more change in that one?
We did.
Yes, we did, I'm just making sure everybody's there. Okay, the other change is under number one, where it says two years at least has elapsed since the person's death. That should be stricken.
On which?
On FFE, this one here. Coming up, it should be stricken.
So you're striking all number one?
On this.
What was the question?
On the worksheet, yes.
Yes, on the checklist.
It's, it's, I think we had that problem before, where we might not want to do that.
Everybody with me?
Yes.
Okay. Next is IB, IHBAA dash R, Referral Procedures in General Education. Okay, under B, Referrals by Staff, the very last paragraph on page one, starts individuals or agency representatives. That should be stricken there, because it was, it was put in under C, Referral by Others. You'll, if you turn the page, you'll see that's all new. So basically, that just got moved from referrals by staff to under referrals by others.
So that whole paragraph comes in?
Yes, because it, it got moved under to C.
It's repeated.
It's repeated, right, right now. And then the last change is under JKAA. In definitions, under A1, it says physical escort, it needs to say physical transport. Did I miss anything?
Nope.
Okay, great.
Sue's, Sue's gonna double-check on that, check on that. You already have a question?
I have a question.
Okay.
Do you wanna speak about that, does it hold?
Well, are we done, done?
We're done making those changes, now we can open for discussion on any particular.
Okay, before we do the changes, let me, I, I just, for a matter of protocol, there, there are, go ahead and listen, I didn't count them, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 15, 14, 15, 16 for first reading tonight. We got through 12 of them in the policy committee, but what I'd like to suggest, and if you remember earlier, I did not make an adjustment to the agenda. We have another month before this goes back for a second reading. That'll give the, the policy committee an opportunity to, to review not only the changes, whatever you discussed tonight, but to review those four as well. So, as a matter of practice, I would like to suggest that unless it's grossly unacceptable, that we, we go with the, the policy committee's recommendation to pass it on the first reading, and then we become more, more, we scrutinize it a little bit more before our second reading. And as you know, our policy says we have two readings. They have to be a first reading and then a meeting, and then a second. So it's a first meeting after the second meeting, if that makes sense. But anyway, we have a meeting, we skip the meeting, and then we have the second reading. But there's nothing that says we have to approve all them, that, that meeting. So, if we have a meeting, like we're having tonight, we approve these first readings, and then we come back to first meeting in March, and they're all listed as a second, second reading, and you're not comfortable, you're comfortable with 12 out of the 16, we vote on the 12 out of the 16. As you remember from last month, we pushed, we pushed three or four policies into the second meeting of the month. Still means the policy. Uh, still means the policy, practice and whatever, so, um, I, and, for me, I'd, I'd like to, I prefer to see you do that than to delay the first reading on a policy for another whole month. So if you, if you're not comfortable with that, then obviously.
So I need clarification, Jim, on that.
What's that?
I need clarification on that.
Yep.
So if we have a question or comment about one of these policies, are you asking us to wait until the second reading, do you, okay?
No. So I know there's a couple, there's, the ones that we've covered, all of these are for first reading, I'd like you to consider them, um, tonight for a first reading, but particularly if there are major objections or major concerns, and I know you have one, um, then let's talk about it tonight.
Okay.
And, uh, we can, we can come to some, but I'm saying, you know, for instance, the policies that we did cover, those are all policies that have come from Sue, um, and I reviewed them, she's reviewed them, the policy committee hasn't had a chance to go through them, to look at all of her recommendations, but I think there's been enough, um, this kind of fits in with Joe said earlier, those, these are not things that she and I are making up, you know? They come from mean school management, they come from, uh, federal policy, so, uh, I, I can't imagine there's anything here that's so incredibly, uh, controversial, we'll say no way in the world. Part of it is, as Joe pointed out earlier, these are coming from federal policy and so some of these things, we have virtually no, um, you know, leeway with deciding whether we do it or we don't, but there are some we do and that's what we should talk about.
Is there any that you would like to discuss?
Yes. So, um, I have a question on policy DJ. Um, as this is, has come up and I've had quite a few lengthy discussions with a former chair, um, on this as well, and she had reached out to Charlotte Bates from MSMA, um, who strongly suggests against putting this in our policy. Um, Mrs. Bates knows of two other schools who have tried this and have gone back to the recommended MSMA policy. I'm just really afraid of this coming back on the school, um, for favoritism. It's my understanding with some of the bids that we put out anyways, that we can request who we bid from, so if that's the case, I don't see this as even needing to be in there.
So we did, I will say, say we did, um, uh, talk about that as part of the policy committee. I'm, I'm not, I don't necessarily agree with that interpretation, um, but it, it really does, like a lot of the things we talked about earlier, is it necessary? Is it going to change our practice? For, for myself personally, I think if that language was generic, might have, I, I think the decisions that were made a year ago, a little more than a year ago, were, were erroneous. Um, and, and this might have created a different set of circumstances, but ultimately, as I, you sent that information, Jan, and I've read that, I think ultimately it doesn't, um, it doesn't really change anything. If this, if this creates, my job and your job as the school committee is to eliminate as much exposure as possible. If the feeling is for the committee that this creates exposure, then don't have, um, I don't think it's going to change, um, it's going to change the process. And I want to be specific for those of you who may not be aware of this, um, and, and this was a, this was something that went through court cases, um, fairly recently and very close by, and I'll be specific, it, it happened in Lisbon, um, when they were building their new gym. They, um, they, they went out for an RFP for an architect and they did not, um, award the bid to the local, to the lowest bidder, which is the general practice. Um, and they solicited those, they solicited those bidders and, uh, so that's what, whatever, it doesn't matter. So it really wasn't a true RFP, it was a true bidding process where they asked certain architects to, uh, to, to bid. The courts ruled correctly in my mind, that if you send bids out to specific companies, you are in de facto, you are de facto pre-qualifying them as, as capable of doing what you want them to do. So they are pre-qualified bids. Uh, in that case, Lis- it's, it's a court case, so I can talk about this publicly. Lisbon solicited those bids and then didn't go with, with the low bidder. That company sued Lisbon and they prevailed because the, the court ruled that if you, if you ask people to bid, you've already made up your mind that they've, that they are able to, to fulfill the job. So in that respect, you have to go with a low bid. So, um, that, that sort of guides, uh, everything here. Conversely, if you truly do an RFP, an RFP just basically says you have something that needs to be done, you're going to buy something or some work that needs to be done, and you put it out in the newspaper and you don't solicit anybody, then anybody can, can apply for that, including somebody who may not be qualified, completely qualified. So you have two issues then to, to consider as, um, a deciding body. One, who's the low bidder and are they qualified? And if the answer is they're not qualified, then whether they're low or not makes them irrelevant and you, and you don't, you don't consider them. So given that fairly recent history, I think it's, I, I would be fine with, um, getting rid of this language. I will also say this though, for me personally, this is just my own personal feeling, if you have qualified local people and you don't take advantage of that, I think that's bad business. It's not about being, uh, I've had conversations with, with other people who disagree with me, um, it's, to me, it's not favoritism, it's just being smart. And, um, the fact that they're local should also not work against them. And my, my opinion is looking at it from a totally objective, um, coming in brand new, that the fact that people, we had vendors who, who bid for certain products, uh, the fact that they were local was actually held against them because the process, as I just described it before, was not followed. Had it been followed, a different decision had to be made. They were, they were solicited for bids, they had the lowest bids, they were not awarded the bid in either case, that's, that's not acceptable. So long would it wait to say, I'm good, I'm good with getting rid of it.
I, I just really, and I, believe me, I am more than thankful, I asked, specifically asked Chairman Guyer to find language that we could put in for local businesses, but to me, this coming from MSMA and coming from Drummond and Woodson, I'm just not comfortable with having that in our policy.
Okay.
Joe?
I don't disagree with what Jan is saying. I get a different tact on it. I just want to take out the local favoritism clause, okay? However, I didn't feel that, the example that I would use, obviously, that affected us, okay, that we wrote the bid the correct way in the sense that we were not considering things like loss of time, taking the vehicle to be serviced, um, convenience of, uh, you know, having somebody nearby, okay, who could help us if we had a problem, that there are things beyond just the price of the vehicle. And that was the thing that bothered me the most is that nobody considered it. There was all just simply the bottom line price. And I, I just felt that we did not go far enough in explaining, not that I want to shout out other bidders who don't bid because they say they're going to go local anyway, no, it's got to be part of the deal. And, uh, because just the expense of maintaining that vehicle can add up to a lot, especially if you have to travel and leave it and all the rest of those things.
Any other thoughts, comments, discussions?
I feel like having the word "may" in here allows us to make the decision about whether we want to look at, um, regional or local versus whoever the lowest bidder happens to be. I think that having that in there allows us to have some latitude in making that decision. I, I don't think it would hurt anything to leave it in.
Anybody else? So I guess when, should we take a consensus as to whether we leave it in or not? Do we leave it in for now? Do we want it stricken?
I'd say strike it.
Strike it, okay. Can I say, do you have a?
Say keep it in.
You say keep it in. Keep it. Keep it. Joe?
I don't know where I should go on this. Be honest with you, you're going to take it back to committee, aren't you?
Yeah.
We are.
Why don't you just say, I said, I'll be divided, I'll go with the minority majority, doesn't matter, just the idea that this is a divided opinion, but we know there's something that needs to be changed.
I guess for me, I, I wanted to put it in here and I added it to other places where I've been a superintendent and I feel very strongly about what I've said, um, but I think Janet makes a great point, um, and I, I, like I said earlier, some of the other policies, we talked about, we talked, I think about the necessity, um, and I'm not sure, given the explanation I gave about, um, seeking, seeking bids versus the true RFP process, I don't think it's necessary. I don't think it changes, um, what, the way we're going to do business.
Can I ask?
I guess when I initially put this in here, I was thinking that maybe it would have made a difference, um, last time, but honestly, I don't know that it would.
Can I ask a question? Jim, in your experience, um, in, in doing these or in different districts, ha- well, you just spoke a little bit about your other one, have you seen this in other districts?
I, yeah, it was in.
Because when I like looked in search, when we went through all of this, I could not find it. I mean, I, I, people were saying, oh, Augusta does this, and oh, this district, I mean, I got on their policies and I could not find anything. Um, and I guess sort of my, my follow-up question again, and I having had this discussion with Jenny, was if, if we could go local every time, why wouldn't we? So what, like, to, like, to me, if that, if that was legal and that was okay to do, why wouldn't we just do that every single time?
Yep.
And, and I guess that's, that's why I say we can't because we do have some of these policies in place and that's just what makes me nervous with that because if we could go local every time, you know?
But it, the bidding process does, the, the regulations around that require that we bid, in most cases it's three. Um, we had three people here in Winthrop and whatever, whatever we're looking to vend or to, to get, then theoretically we could do that, but the reality is.
We don't.
We don't.
Yeah.
But I, but I will say I've worked in bigger places where they did have multiple people that could, could bid on it, but you know, um, I usually always do a minimum of three because that's what's required, uh, in, in both the cases with the two things we bid on this year, I, I, uh, that, that went over the threshold, we did not bid on the Coyote, um, whatever it's called.
Kana.
Kana.
Yep.
Um, did not bid on that because it was below the threshold, but we had to bid. Um, but for the other two things, the food van and the tractor, they were above the threshold, so we had to bid and in both cases, we had, we, we solicited four bidders. Um, the, um, so I, I think that's a safeguard against just saying, we're just going to go with, with local and, and I can say personally, I've, I've, and so there's a conversation I had with former chair, uh, where in a previous district where I was, we had a local, um, fuel provider, heating fuel, heating fuel provider, who quite frankly, um, got real lax about, um, pricing and, and we went through the process of, of bidding for fuel and the local vendor did not win it. And that was years ago and they still don't have the, the bid anymore. So, you know, it's, I'm, this is, I, I guess I get, it gets to be a little bit personal for me when there's sort of a sense of we're just going to favor, we're going to favor local people. I'm not looking to favor the local people, I have a dual responsibility to, to save the taxpayers as much money as possible and get the best product possible within that. So it's not an either or, it's not saying that everybody, every time we have something we can buy here in Winthrop, we're going to buy in here in Winthrop. But I ask the flip question, if we can buy in here in Winthrop cheaper, why wouldn't we? It just doesn't make any sense to me, though. So I, I guess, that being said, I'm, I'm happy to leave it in here and let the committee reconsider it, but I, I guess the more I thought about it, the RSU four, uh, is where I got this language from and I was the superintendent there when we added it in, but I wouldn't be a bit surprised, um, and I, I, that was not a new contract where the language from. So have places that have had local vendors preferred language in there taken out, very possible. I certainly can look at that, you know, between now and the next meeting.
Thank you.
I, I feel like since the, um, that decision in Lisbon was, was really precedent setting, you know, so, um, we are, we are bound, um, by the process to, unless we have good reason not to, we should be giving it to the low bidder. I'll also say this, and this, we're spending a lot more time on than I, than I thought we were going to, but I can tell you, just having gone through this process just this year and having done it before, when you talk to somebody, and I'll be very specific, when I talked to Charlie's about the, the van, um, GMC, General Motors, whatever, you know, they give thousands and thousands of dollars for, for these local businesses. It's not just true here at Charlie's, but they, they want to give local schools a real break. And so they, you know, it's, uh, when I followed up, we, we sent out four vendors, I solicited four vendors for the, for the van, Charlie's was the only one who bid. The other three that I talked to before we sent them out, that told them what we were going to do, didn't send in a bid. And when I spoke to one of them, they said, you know, we know what, we know what the local business can give you in terms of a local business discount. And it's thousands of dollars, it's not like it's $500, it's thousands of dollars. So the industry sets it up so that it, it really becomes, um, you know, good. And for me, if, if, if we had a company, I don't care if it's, what it is, but if we had a company in town that did not do a, a good job with their, with their, uh, product, I wouldn't solicit them to bid. So it's not an automatic, it's not a given and that's offensive when, when people say that we should not just give automatically give things to local, um, vendors. But if, if they're local and their quality.
We do.
The no, should be no bring.
Any other discussion, any other policy?
Not really, yeah, somebody had.
Well, I mean, I think I've already said what I needed to say.
To the committee, just.
Yeah, no, to, well, just that this doesn't say you have to give.
Oh, yes.
Local preference, it just says that you can. And I, from my background, that's an important allowance to say, so use Joe's example, for instance, just because someone in Augusta bids lower, doesn't mean that somebody in Winthrop couldn't do the same job. I mean, ultimately, would be saving money by going with somebody in Winthrop even though they weren't the lowest bidder, if it means that we don't have to pay somebody time to drive to Augusta, to leave the van, to, to get a ride back. In that instance, having this allowance is good for us, but that word "may" allows us to use it, but doesn't require us to use it. And I think that that's a really important hinge piece to think about because.
So we have, we'll, um, I'll do some more research on what's happening. And it will be interesting for me to look at places, particularly two places where I've been a superintendent, to see if they've, um, they've rescinded it because I will say that this language was added to those contracts, um, those policies before the Lisbon decision. So that's a bit of a landmark decision for our state.
So do we want to leave it in for now and do more research?
I do.
And make a decision the next time or does it, does that make the most sense?
Sorry, can't hurt.
Okay. All right.
So are we done with that one? Because I, Sue wanted.
Yeah.
Sue had done some research on JKAA, the special ed, what'd you call it?
Use of physical restraint and seclusion.
Yeah, but it's a, the thing that, um.
Transport.
Escort, transport, yes.
So, um, the policy that's written right now in front of you without that change is consistent with the language found in chapter 33, which is that rule governing physical restraint and seclusion. Um, that rule was amended in April of 2013, that's what's posted on the department's website. So I emailed the state director of special education, Erin Fraser, and she shared with me that yes, in fact, the rewrite of chapter 33, they took out the word escort and changed it to transport. However, with our back and forth conversation, it's not even posted, there, there's nowhere There, there's nowhere where we can find that language change. She said that there was no mention of either escort or transport in the new revision. I asked her for a copy of that policy or that rule and she sent me the one from 2013. So what came on the original package from MSMA, there's a specific note that says, "The language of this sample closely follows that of main department of that rule, Chapter 33. Words considering modifying the language of this policy should consult with your school attorney before doing so." So one of the benefits that we have is the Capital Area Regional Special Ed Directors are meeting next Friday with Eric Carlin and I have added this topic to our list of questions so we can get some free legal advice.
Thank you.
Yay, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other of these policies that people have questions or want to discuss?
I do want to remind all of you that the Policy Committee did not specifically get through IHBC Child Fine, JFAB Commission of Non-Resident Students, and JKAR, Physical Restraint and Seclusion Advantage Procedure. So if you're uncomfortable voting on that, then we probably should not vote on them tonight. I would really like to beg you to not do that, to vote on them anyway.
So I could move to amend, I could present an amendment.
Can, Nate, you're not comfortable voting on them for first reading?
Meaning that I can vote on the first 13 for first reading?
That's not exactly the first 13, but it's...
Well, I can vote on all of those before JFAB.
Can I just make a note that on JKAR, there were no changes?
Oh, yes, it's true. So really just IHBAR and IHBC that we did not cover Policy Committee?
Well, I, what I would do is, my amendment would basically say those items that were not covered in the Policy Committee meeting, okay, will be laid aside until the next meeting or until after the next Policy Committee meeting.
Even for the one with no changes, Joe?
Excuse me?
Even for the one with no changes?
There's not one on JFAB either.
No change on JFAB.
I think only in fairness, we should take the three that they didn't talk about because it would run out of time.
Okay.
Otherwise, that one's going to remain in effect anyway. This could be the same one.
My concern would be that by doing that, we postpone the approval of this by another month. And, and maybe in some cases that makes sense, but these are pretty much, Sue can speak to them, but these are pretty much from, you know, she just said from Chapter 33. So there's not much that we have a lot of...
Well, I don't have, nobody's seconding my amendment, so I can just kind of figure it out.
Thought you just talked about it. So you can make that amendment, see if anybody doesn't want to do it. Want to make the amendment, Joe?
Not really. Just trying to help.
Can I, can I just go back to DJ for one minute?
Yes.
Because in looking through DJC on page 204, that is competitive bidding of other purchases. Third paragraph that starts the superintendent may forego the competitive bid process or RFP process only when he or she determines that quality, expertise, time factors, or other important considerations outweigh the possible benefits of bidding or requesting proposals. In each such case, the committee shall be informed of the superintendent's decision and the reason for it in advance of entering into a contract. So does that sidestep that, Superintendent?
I guess it could be...
Does that put all the pressure on you?
I think you're always, anytime something's over $25,000 at threshold, which is set by the federal government, I think you're better to bid it. But I guess technically you could certainly interpret that as, as, but I, I mean, it's not our intent to circumvent any of the processes. We want to be as fair and objective as possible.
Right, no, I, that's, I agree, but if, so even with this case, if you had three RFPs come in and your second lowest was the better of all three bids, it doesn't matter where they are, can you go with that bid using this clause? Or no?
I don't, I don't personally, whether we can or we, I don't personally think we should. Yeah, but you know, it's, what's interesting, and Sue pointed this out during the Policy Committee meeting, is talking about the RFP process and there's a, there is a procedural difference between RFP, where you just basically put it out in, in public and anybody who wants to can bid. And a bid process, the bid procedures where you specifically solicit companies. So if you follow that logic, then, then yes, what you said is true under C, that third paragraph, because that's the RFP process. And so some startup business in town is now going to, is going to bid on something that they really aren't, aren't, you know, are an incredible bidder. And so yes, that does permit us the right to look at that and say no.
Okay.
We don't, we don't think that you're capable of fulfilling the requirements of whatever it is.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready to make a vote?
Yes.
On all of the policies for first reading?
Yes.
Are you still looking for a motion in a second or did you get that?
We already...
You seconded it.
Yep.
Jana moved, you seconded it.
A long time ago.
I'm just making sure everybody, everybody is comfortable with voting all, all of them for first reading. Okay, so I will call the vote then, all in favor. Okay, that's five in favor, so it passes unanimously. Public comments.
Sue, good job.
Sorry, do you have a chat?
There is nobody, oh, no, Carl's there. Hi, Carl.
Hi, Carl.
You can only respond via chat.
Oh, okay.
There's nothing on, on the chat so far. Anybody in person that has a comment they would like to make?
Can I just say, Sue, I just want you to know that Sue, in advance of that, typed that out to, and if there was anybody else besides Carl on there, they would have seen that, that the next item on the, on the agenda is public comment. If you have any comments, please begin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, no comments, so we can move on to school committee comments. And I will start with Jana.
Yes, I got a bunch, but I'll go quick. End of the town council meeting, and we talked about this with Superintendent Hodgkin just briefly. The town manager mentioned that possibly the school will be paying off our $9,000 debt next, this year. And you hadn't heard anything about that yet, still, Jim?
No, I actually did the next day. Nine hundred thousand, is what you mean, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, he, he didn't recall making that comment and he doesn't believe that's the case, so.
Oh, bummer.
He did make that comment.
Okay, so we'll move on. Just want to say thank you. I'm going to thank Joel a couple of times tonight, but thank you to Mr. Stoneton, the athletes, the coaches, and the parents, and everyone who is dealing with all of the schedule changes, with all the sports, it seems like it's a daily basis of this school can't play, but wait this one can. And it just, from this side, it seems to be going very smooth. And I know that's probably not the case with announcements and kids knowing where they're going and parents knowing where their kids are. So just thank you for all of you who are putting in a bunch of work there. I just felt it kind of appropriate because our team should have been going up to Mount Eibar tonight to just send thoughts out to the Mount Eibar community after the tragedy of losing two of their athletes and a couple of other, or another kid in ICU from, from an accident. So just thinking of them and hoping for the best for that community. Thank you to, again, to Mr. Stoneton and Superintendent Hodgkins and Lisa Rivers, who are, have gotten the middle school hooked up and streaming. Lots of positive comments on Facebook and other areas. We're parents, very excited about that, so thank you. Thank you to Superintendent Hodgkin for being ahead of the game with getting vaccine information out and just being on top of that in hopes to get those who want to be vaccinated, vaccinated. Our superintendent sort of mentioned it, but we haven't started that ball rolling yet. And just again, thank you to everybody working in our school buildings and remotely. Hopefully with this vaccine coming up, we'll be back to somewhat normal in the fall. But it's been tough on a lot of people and I just really appreciate what everyone's doing.
I'm done. Do you have a thing?
I just have one thing.
Yeah?
I got a card from the National, I might say the name wrong, the Honors Society here.
Yes.
Like a welcoming card, they sign their names, nice little message. And I thought that was a nice connection from the school to me or the community. I thought that was just, it's a small thing, but I thought it was a big thing. It was appreciated.
A classy thing.
Yeah.
Yes, excellent. Kelly?
I also wanted to say thank you to the National Honor Society. I put my card up online, I'm a little, I thought that was really nice. I also wanted to just recognize that, you know, as a committee, we've been talking about how do we stay competitive, whether it's with teachers or with students in the area staying here. And I think that to remain competitive, we really need a good working technology program. We need dedicated, competent, and consistent staff to make sure that that happens. So I think that's very, very important.
Thank you. Joe?
Well, I would ditto all those comments. I'm really impressed with the streaming that's going on in spite of the changes in the schedule and everything. But I hear from just so many people that really enjoy finding them and watching it, seeing what's happening. So I'm excited about that. But on a sad note, I just wanted to mention that back in the early seventies, when I was first teaching, that we had a superintendent who kind of surprised people one day when he said, you know, we need a new high school. Like we need a new, a new middle school. That was Superintendent Dale Dowdy back in the early 1970s. And unfortunately, he was a very good superintendent, but he died this past week. But he was a real mentor to some of us during those times. And even when he negotiated against us, okay, we always knew that his, his intent was to make the school system a better system, but also to have us looking forward as to what we need to get done. So I mentioned that, I'm sorry the deal is passed on.
Josh?
Yes. Alrighty, first off, I'd like to recognize Rudy, our owl. This is all the time, I guess, but he's pretty cool. We have him in class sometimes and it definitely makes it, it's been a nice tool to have, especially with some of our teachers that are out because he can see a whole 180 some, depending on the Zoom and how you set up the near spot. And he looks at you when you talk, so I think that's pretty nice. I'd like to talk a little bit about NHS. So the community has been helping us in a GoFundMe to send this to a conference pretty soon and a few guys have supported us, which I think is great. But I'm just trying to promote that in, out there and some, the GoFundMe is out there. But thank you to all the community members and faculty that have supported us. Right now, so all of our senior members of NHS have service projects that we're doing. So that's something that we hope that will happen, impact on the community, lasting impact, maybe something to leave a footprint behind, you know, to help the community. So one of our students, Karina Muzuski, actually is doing a closet, kind of like an upcycle, recycle. Sorry, she got me on that, it's not upcycle, it's recycling. Because upcycling means you take all their clothes and you, I don't know, tailor them to make them more chic and cool. But this is recycling. So what we're having is we're having, or she's having, students come in and donate some of their old clothes and then we wash them, or she washes them, and brings them back. And it's been kind of a hit, actually. And so we're trying to promote recycling, so that's one of the projects. And actually NHS would be glad to come talk to you guys about the different senior projects that are going on if you guys would like them to come talk to you guys maybe next meeting, just for a brief or through Zoom, or just to report it. Yeah, just about that. And then secondly, Student Leadership is moving on with their Faculty of the Month, kind of, kind of like help at the town meetings, up at the high school we do Student of the Month. So we have chosen our candidate and so that will be presented at the next town meeting at the high school. So if you guys would like to tune in on that, I think it would be pretty fun.
Tease.
Yes.
What's the date of the town meeting, Jeff?
Ah, I don't have that yet.
It's Tuesday.
Is it coming Tuesday?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you know what time that is?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, yeah. We have a big schedule last...
So Josh, how, any changes to the lunch participation?
Um, I think a little bit. I, I think I touched on it a little bit last time. Not that I've heard anything recently, but like, I mean, something that was really nice to hear for me is like, I have one of my friends, I guess, that I don't see many often anymore because COVID and seniors in and out of the high school, but she was like, I was going to pack myself a lunch today, but actually I felt like I shouldn't get a school lunch. And that was kind of nice to hear after all, we've kind of been trying to help to get the lunch back. Again, we're just keep trying to promote, I'm trying to use the Instagram stories because I think it's a great little thing to kind of get out and I think it's kind of, you can have some fun with it.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Josh, if you want to send me to Facebook, the GoFundMe site, I'll put it on the Winthrop site too.
Yes, awesome.
Yeah. Thank you.
Amelie? I just want to reiterate what Miss Hagan, Mr. Pietrowski said. It's been really amazing to be able to see the basketball games and just sports games in general. And I get to watch my brother, who's a senior, for his last couple of basketball games. So that has been really nice and I know my parents have really appreciated that. And yeah, I just want to say it was really great to be at our first in-person committee meeting and actually see everybody.
Ditto.
And I just wanted to say quickly, same as Amelie, it's nice to be here and I want to thank Mr. Campbell and the high school for hosting us here at the PAC. And I think Mr. Swanson had a chat he wanted to make.
Yep, Mrs. Fawcett, Justin unmuted him. So Carl, if you could, he probably can't hear me because I'm muted, so if you can communicate with him?
Yeah. Can I unmute my video?
You're good.
Can I unmute my video too?
The only person that's going to see you, Carl, is me.
I remember what he looks like.
You want to, go for it.
I have something to show you, I thought the video would help.
Oh, yep. That's not possible.
Turn the, turn the laptop towards you guys and you can really see that.
Go ahead, Carl, we'll see what we can do.
You guys can see it, or look at gym screen and see it on the screen.
Just look at gym screen.
I would, if you knew if there's a cable connection somewhere in the vicinity of there and an adapter for like the MacBook to plug in a projector.
Well, we could, but it's probably a five-minute process too.
Carl, go ahead if you want to turn on your video.
It won't unmute.
Yeah, I can't do it either.
Okay, and I can't change your video either.
I can just talk about it, how's that?
That would be great.
Okay, Don Beatty has just published a 216-page book entitled Educating Once a May. It's got about eight or nine chapters, it's 216 pages, and it has chapters on local educators and local civic leaders that you'd be very interested in, I think. Let me just mention some of the educators that are mentioned. Asa Gordon, Greta Gordon, Carol McGary, Birdell Jones, Joe Pietrowski, Catherine Markovic, Dave Cook, Phil Richardson, Bud Barnes, Karen Chris, Bobby Bowler, Linda Easterbrook, that's just a few of the educators that are mentioned. There are civic leaders mentioned in it. There are civic leaders mentioned in it, Cliff West, Pat Putman, Roger Garret, Mary Dyer, and so on. There's a lot of famous local people that has tidbits about their life and what they've accomplished. This book is available to you for free if you make a contribution to the Winthrop May Historical Society Building Fund. So if you want to get a free copy of it, donate to the Winthrop May Historical Society Building Fund. If you want the address of where to send your check, let me know.
Thank you, Carl. Anybody else? All right.
Thank you, Carl.
Awesome.
There is no executive discussion, so without objection, I can declare this meeting adjourned at eight twelve PM.
Yes.
Thank you.